Order today is March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Chief Deputy Cruz, can you lead us in the pledge, please? Okay, the first order of business is a public hearing in the matter of petition to vacate certain easements within lots one, two, three, and four in Deer Creek in Warwick County, Indiana. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and enter the public hearing.
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting and enter into the public hearing.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Sir?
Jim Morley, Jr., project engineer. Uh, this is a replant of a few lots in Deer Creek subdivision, and it came before you as drainage board and as county commissioners for no road improvement and no drainage improvement. We talked about the vacation of these easements. They were on the old lot lines, and now we have lot lines in new locations. And so we had to vacate the old easements. We submitted information to all the different utilities, and there were no, uh, no utilities that have to be relocated or anything. So we would ask that you would vacate these easements. Further ado, it's worth new easements are granted with the new plant, with the replant. Uh, there are new sets of easements, and so these would just go away because they're on the old lot lines.
And this was advertised in the standard. They sent notices to the adjacent property owners, and we do have letters from the utilities of non-objection.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak for or against this? Like the record show that no one wants to speak? And Steve, any comments?
No, as Molly and Jim have said, it's basically reconfiguration of those four lots, and, uh, no one's occupied them yet. Either the easements or the lots, and they just wish to, uh, vacate the old easements and replant new ones with the new configuration.
Understood. All right. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to leave the public hearing and enter back into the regular session.
So, second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Petition to vacate certain easements within lots one, two, three, and four in Deer Creek in Warwick County. This will be ordinance number twenty twenty-three.
Oh, five.
Oh, five.
Make a motion to approve the vacation of lots one, two, three, and four of easements in Deer Creek.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Okay, next order of business is area plan.
Okay, I have one. It's a formal request to withdraw a letter of credit. Um, we are hoping that we will receive this letter of credit. It's for Stratman Johnson P U D, and it's for street construction. But, um, there's been some conflict between who's going to post it and whatnot. So this letter of credit we have expires Saturday. So I'm gonna need to, if we don't have it by this Thursday, go Friday to draw the money. And it's twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Send me permission to do that.
What, who's this for?
It's Stratman Johnson. John Stratman is who posted the letter of credit, but he developed it with the neighbor Lynn Johnson. So I believe their intent is to get us either the letter of credit or a cashier's check. But I don't know if we'll have it before this other one expires, and I cannot let this one expire.
So they have not communicated with you or anything?
They just called today. We've been calling, and we finally reached them today.
So you need from us the permission to go draw the money if need be?
Yes, and your signature on a request.
Okay. Counsel?
Take motion, uh, motion to approve that, subject to there not being a new letter of credit received by, when did you say?
Thursday.
Thursday. This one expires on?
Saturday. Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, the next order of business is a public hearing in the petition to incorporate the town of Victoria Woods, Indiana. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular session and enter into the public here.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Okay. Petitioners?
Hello, Jordan Eichner, representing Oakland Holdings, petitioner for the project Victoria Woods. Let me ask first, do you guys have any hard copies up there?
Well, we got hard copies.
I bet you do. Uh, okay, if you do, um, we, I guess it's kind of the presentation that we emailed your office. Do you guys have that? Because it looks like our technology is not gonna work.
Ours is smaller.
It's smaller, then let me give you some, and then any extras for the, uh, public, I'll put back there in the back.
Jordan, was that the same one on APC too?
Yes, well, there's a few, a few changes.
I think I got the latest one.
And then, uh, okay, I know, uh, you guys have your normal meetings, and we're in a couple of public hearings. So I think we're gonna try to do more of a briefer, uh, more brief presentation today. So, uh, just to remind, maybe, and I'll try to refer maybe to public a little bit since it's a public hearing, um, and, and your board as well. Uh, but just a reminder that where we are on this process, we have petitioned, uh, to become a town, uh, for our development. And this is now our third public meeting, uh, on the process. And, uh, so we have been to area plan twice, and, and that's why we're here. Um, so we've assembled a team that, that is experts on this, certainly I'm not. And, uh, I've got, uh, Steve Unger with Boles McKinney and Corby with, uh, Crone and Associates as well, financial advisors. Um, so I think we're gonna try to just jump right in, in, in efforts to be brief. Um, I'll let Steve kind of go through the process that relates to statutes and what the state of Indiana says, how, how we're supposed to do this. And, uh, we can stop anytime, just let us know for questions, and certainly for anybody in the public that might want to speak as well. Okay?
Yep. Jordan told me I had ten minutes, so I'm really gonna talk at thirty thousand feet. We spent two hours, uh, at the first plane commission meeting going through this presentation. I know you guys don't want to listen to me talk probably for two hours. So it is a very similar, I mean, we've given you the, uh, the PowerPoint that we put together. We've made some tweaks, um, from, uh, after the plane commission meeting, especially based on some of the discussions that we had had with your guys as financial consultants, Baker Tilly. I apologize for the technology problems. We had a, uh, we, we had the, had hoped to have the presentation up for the, for the public. But I'm really gonna, gonna fly through this at thirty thousand feet and then, and then hopefully, um, take questions. And Corby's here as well, and Jordan to address your questions. For the benefit of the public, and I'm already on, on to slide three, the area that we're talking about incorporating, it's about five hundred and ninety-five acres. It's south of, uh, the city of Boonville, and it is just east of the, uh, Victoria Golf Course. Um, then the next slide, incorporation is essentially the process of creating a town. Um, so we're talking about turning this area into a town that is then governed by statutes. And the statutes tell you what the powers and authorities and responsibilities are of a town, but would essentially have all of the rights and responsibilities of, of a Chandler or a Newburgh or a Tennyson. It would just be another town that is in, in the county, a self-governing political subdivision. Then, then if the, the process is generally, we file a petition. Um, the petition has been signed by all of the property owners or substantially all. I know there's been some properties that have transferred since we filed the petition. In all of the property owners within the incorporated area, proposed incorporated area, it's gone through the, gone to the plane commission. Plane commission did an investigation. They reported, uh, back to the commissioners, a favorable recommendation, uh, on the petition by a vote of five to one. Um, we held, again, multiple hearings there. The first one was a couple hours long, then a second meeting, uh, before they approved it. And so now we're before the commissioners to hold their public hearing. So again, that's what we're here for today, is holding the, the public hearing. And ultimately, we're asking that you guys adopt an ordinance approving this, uh, incorporation. I will say there's a lot more that went, we've been working on this project. I know Jordan has for, for a long time. I've been working on it for about a year, uh, with, with Corby's firm as well. Um, a lot of work with the assessor's office. Um, we've talked to the trustee, we've coordinated with Boonville, we've worked with, uh, the, the, the fire territory as well. And again, if I'm working through the slides here, uh, the Warwick County Plane Commission. So there's a statute, it's, uh, thirty-six, one, five. It's basically the statute that governs how you incorporate a new town. Specifically, there's considerations for the commissioners to consider. That's in section eight of the statute, um, and I've outlined those here. The first three kind of relate to the territory. Is it, is it reasonably compact and contiguous? Is there, is there, do you project that there will be, uh, development now or in the reasonably near future? And does it also allow, does the territory allow for reasonable, uh, future growth? And then section eight, four lists services that are, and, and the statutory language is a substantial majority of the property owners um, in the, in the proposed area have agreed that these services, uh, there's enumerated list of services that these will be adequately provided in the, in the area. And then if I'm going to the next slide, that those services can be provided with a reasonable tax rate. Um, and then the last factor is in the best interest of the people in that, uh, territory involved is the proposed incorporation. If, I'm already on to slide, slide eleven. So what we did here to kind of address that substantial majority of the property owners is we included within the petition, you'll see, again, signed by a hundred percent of the property owners, so far more than whatever a substantial majority is, have signed a petition agreeing with the fiscal analysis, the plan, the fiscal plan that was prepared by Crone in outlining the manner in which services would be provided. Um, and they agree that they would be provided on an adequate basis. Um, the next slide just roughly overviews kind of what, what the area is, what the current development is, what the proposed buildout is, what the estimated population would be. Uh, roughly, we're estimating about thirteen hundred and seventy-five people, assuming five hundred and fifty households with some single-family apartments, some, some business, one government building. And again, that's within the original, uh, the original, um, uh, five hundred and ninety-five acres that we're, we're, we're looking at there. There is, we do believe, in addition to the potential growth or development of the existing area, there's potential growth to the south as well that, uh, could eventually be incorporated into the town. Again, no, no plans for that right now, um, but certainly as the development occurs, it, it could always be brought in. Um, we would expect with the consent of the property owner at, at that point. Um, we do have, and one of the factors is the extent, or we, we need to get consent of, uh, of a neighboring municipality. In this case, Boonville, Boonville has adopted an ordinance consenting to this, which was, uh, attached to the, the petition. In terms of services, I'll say, as I, with the way we laid this presentation out at the plane commission was addressing all of the, the services that are outlined in the statute. Again, from thirty thousand feet, Indiana law answers a lot of the questions that the plane commission had in terms of how services are provided um, and what the responsibility is for a municipality or a county. Um, and I'll say it's, and oftentimes going to be very similar to what you experience with the other municipalities um, that you already have in, in the county. But, uh, police sheriff will maintain countywide jurisdiction. Um, we do, um, Boonville has proposed, and we, we generally, our plan, uh, assumes a five-year contract with Boonville to provide, uh, police protection service. Um, fire will remain a part of and will, uh, of the, uh, fire territory. Working through the slides, again, infrastructure, uh, the town will take over responsibility for virtually all of the public infrastructure. And again, this is by statute inside of the municipal boundaries. There are a few exceptions, like for example, uh, bridges. Um, when the county has a cumulative, countywide cumulative bridge fund, county remains responsible for, uh, the structure that carries vehi- vehicular traffic on the bridge. We expect that the town will be responsible for the, there, there's a covered bridge in the community. We expect the town will be responsible for the aesthetic portion of the covered bridge, but the county would still be responsible for the maintenance of the, um, of the actual travel portion that carries vehicular traffic. Uh, utility service, uh, Boonville will provide, currently provides sewer service, would continue to. Boonville will also provide water. Center Point, uh, which is, uh, the old veteran would provide electric, uh, and gas. Uh, we, this was the next slide, kind of, there was a, a lot of questions at the plane commission about stormwater responsibility. Again, um, all of those stormwater, uh, the, the MS four coordinator, that's all fixed by statute. Um, there are some county drainage, well, can, there's, there's overlaps. County will, uh, drainage board will continue to have jurisdiction. The town will have jurisdiction over, over, the county is over regulated drains. Town would have jurisdiction over, uh, actual stormwater facilities. Town would have jurisdiction over, uh, maintaining the water courses. Um, it would remain within the Warwick County Soil and Water Conservation District. That's a, a countywide entity. Um, and then we would be removed from the county's, uh, MS four jurisdiction. But there would be, until IDIM designated the town as its own MS four entity, the, um, permitting, this, uh, stormwater, uh, management permitting would occur through, uh, the, the Soil and Water Conservation District. Planning and zoning, if I, if I'm jumping to the, uh, next slide. Um, again, this was a question of the, the planning department, at what point does jurisdiction transfer? County continues to exercise planning jurisdiction for the area regardless of incorporation until such time as the new town creates its own planning department, basically adopts the planning law, adopts its own comprehensive plan, and, uh, zoning ordinance or unified development ordinance creates its own plane commission, uh, MBZA. Um, it, we expect that will be done very early in the process. But again, we'll need to have a new town, uh, elected, uh, town council elected to, uh, adopt those ordinances and, um, take over the, the zoning jurisdiction. But the law recognizes that there won't be a gap, right? Just because we, you guys create this town and approve it. Um, if it takes three, four months after, uh, January, uh, for it, um, for the, that to happen, there won't be a gap in, uh, zoning and planning authority. Um, the next slide, again, health protection remains with the county. Uh, parks and recreation, the town will have its own parks department. Uh, just like annexation, uh, uh, incorporation does not change anybody's school districts. It doesn't impact school boundaries. Um, they'll continue to attend the same schools, uh, with or without incorporation. So I'm gonna, I know, in the interest of time, Corby's here to answer question, uh, questions, uh, about the, the budget and, and potential tax impact. What the statute says, one of the factors is, um, the extent to which the proposed services can be financed by a reasonable tax rate. That's one of the factors to consider. And so what the Crone team did and spent a lot of time doing is basically developed a ten-year buildout of a budget and services for this town, assuming what, you know, assumptions of, of reasonable, uh, growth uh, and development of the, of the community. And so what they did in doing that, and we've had, had a lot of conversations, I'll say, with the DLGF and worked with them in terms of the process, um, and understanding at what point the property taxes would, would start to be kicked in. But in doing that, what they've really projected is a, a buildout, um, a tax rate of about, uh, eighty-five cents for the, the new community. Not initially, initially it would be higher, but then expected to level off at eighty-five percent, which is, is pretty, um, it's, it's a, it's a very reasonable tax rate statewide, and I also think, um, countywide a- as well. So I won't jump through, again, there's slides that have details on how they built that out and what the projected cost is. And I know we've given you guys a lot of that information, uh, kind of their cash flow estimates. And then we also had them look at, not required by the statute, but we also had them look at what the estimated tax impact is to other taxing units. Um, no impact to property taxes, right? Those, these properties aren't subject to the cap at this point. And so it won't impact other taxing units in terms of circuit breaker credits, right? If you guys follow me, they won't be a loss to other taxing units, um, as a result of the, the property taxes.
Can I stop you?
Yeah.
When will it affect the circuit breaker?
Uh, I mean, it would, it would, in my experience, and I think Corby can jump in as well, it would be at a, at the point at which all of the taxing units within the county or the, the layered taxing units exceeded one percent of the, um, uh, exceeded one percent, the tax rates exceeded one percent. At that point, I think you would start to see it kick in.
Yeah, inevitably, you're gonna have properties that are gonna be at, at full buildout. You're gonna have properties that are reaching circuit breaker. Um, but you're also getting additional tax revenues at that point. So, um, any additional circuit breaker will only have levy associated with it as well. Um, so really, the circuit breaker will manage the same exact way it does right now. Um, but there won't be any additional circuit breakers per se without additional levy and property taxes being out there, not just available to the town, but also the county.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I think since, since we're, we're paying for a jail with potentially lit funds, that it, that's not gonna affect the circuit breaker. If we were paying for the jail with tax revenue, with property tax revenue, then, then that would come into play.
There, there could be a circuit breaker impact, but I think to, to Corby's point, if, if you added another, another rate, right? If that was rate-based.
Right.
Any immediate impact from circuit breaker losses would be, it, it's essentially negligible. Um, there, there are essentially no properties that are at circuit breaker right now, and I don't believe there will be any after. Um, even if the town incorporated right now as it sits, that would be hitting circuit breaker.
His point is unless they added a, they, they, if they added a debt rate for, uh, a jail.
Right, yeah, I mean, if any overlapping.
A property tax obligation.
Yeah.
Exactly. Any overlapping, in theory, could issue property tax back debt or increase their levy through one mechanism or another. And yes, maybe that could push them into the circuit breaker. But again, you're not gonna have any additional circuit breaker losses without having additional assessed value to levy property taxes on.
So, so to Corby's point, there wouldn't be a circuit breaker loss because the revenue's not there now.
Right, right.
Would be the.
Understood.
Yeah. Um, so in terms of lit though, um, again, from, from thirty thousand feet, the, 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 the analysis is, is the, and I'm, I'm jumping on to slide, uh, twenty-four, and I'm probably over my, my ten minutes already, I know. Um, but, uh, what, what, and we, Baker, or, um, Crone did an analysis to show what the potential lit impact is. Um, and again, um, and, and I'll just jump through it here real briefly on, on slide twenty-four, and just to use the county, for example, this is the current lit distribution, um, right? Which is total lit revenue to the county is about a little over nineteen million dollars. And so what we did is we jumped ahead. If you go to the next slide, which that, if you saw, that was the first line. This is, this is three years later in two thousand and twenty-six. This is the first time that, because of the way that property tax revenue and lit works, and we worked through this with the DLGF, um, if this is effective this year, two thousand and twenty-six would be the first time that the new, uh, that the new town would receive a share of lit distribution. And so if you assume what's kind of, in my view, standard in terms of doing this analysis of, of a, of a conservative three percent growth, um, it, it would, you would show that the new town would receive about ninety-three thousand dollars of lit. However, in that same period, the county's total lit revenue would jump to twenty-one million dollars. So what it, what we're showing is that, you know, this, using standard assumptions, which are, which are typically conservative, the county's lit growth, uh, the, the, just the county's share, I mean, that the county is a taxing unit, not countywide, but their share in lit will be more in three years, even with the new town due to just kind of reasonable typical growth. And then we did show the next slide, the projected, if this community were to fully build out in, in, by two thousand and thirty-three, again, the county's total lit would jump to twenty-five million, even the, in the new town's share of the lit would be a little less than a million dollars. So again, that's at full buildout with full growth, and, and you see this across all of the taxing units. Essentially, the, the share in, in lit will, growth will outpace whatever lit would be, um, would be distributed to the new community. And I think Corby, as we've talked about this, has made the point that ultimately, when you look at the numbers, the new town will put more lit, is projected to put more lit into the bucket than what it, it would take away. So the, the other piece then of this, and there was a lot of questions as we've worked through this on the impact of the lit with respect to the jail project. We asked, um, Baker Tilly, the, the county's, uh, financial consultants to review, uh, Crone's figures um, in terms of, of tax impact, in terms of tax rates, and in terms of the, uh, proposed impact on the jail project. And, and again, from, without getting into the nitty-gritty of the details, ultimately, what they concluded is that you would still have sufficient, uh, more than sufficient coverage, even in a worst-case scenario of assuming no growth, which we, we know won't be the case. It's almost like mutually exclusive with the, with the town, would be no growth. Um, but even with no growth, you still have over two hun- or about two hundred and thirty-seven percent of debt coverage, um, which is, is a, a long-winded way of saying sufficient revenue to be able to do the jail project. It won't materially impact, uh, the ability of the county to do the jail, the jail project. So in terms of timing, um, I'm jumping ahead to slide twenty-nine. We're, what we're requesting is that, I mean, that we would need the ordinance. Uh, we've, we've prepared a draft ordinance. I know I sent it to Andrew, and I don't know if you guys have had a chance to see that or make changes. I was out the last week, so we hadn't had a chance to communicate. Um, but, um, we would request that the ordinance be adopted no later than June first, so by the end of May. And the reason for that is there's a trigger in the statute of June first. Ordinance adopted before that would go, uh, the, the, uh, town council and clerk treasurer position would be up for election in the November, uh, election cycle of this year. Um, after that, we would have to wait till the next municipal, um, or county election. Um, and so that would be our request. Um, ideally, the sooner that it gets adopted, the better. And, and kind of, for example, um, we haven't spent a whole lot of time yet on a comprehensive plan and a zoning ordinance. Um, and the, the sooner we know that the new town is gonna be created, the more we can start working on those types of things to help have a smooth transition. If it were adopted, uh, if the ordinance is approved, then the, uh, council, again, and, and clerk treasurer would be up for election in November. Actually, they would take office, um, on November thirtieth, and so then we would be able to hit the ground running, um, in, in getting some administrative things done before the end of the year, but certainly get going, um, on December first. There also, in the draft ordinance we proposed, um, we put language in to make it clear, um, help provide clarity to everybody about when the transition of jurisdiction happened. And we said as of January one, just so that everybody knows, that's, that's when the new town takes over responsibility for all of the various services. So I'm sorry, I know I, I rushed through that very quickly. I went over my, my, my ten minutes, but, but nobody cut me off.
Yeah.
I don't know if Jordan had anything else to add.
I think you probably should let, if anybody has any questions or, or, uh, happy to, uh, answer any questions.
And it, and it is a public hearing, so you should allow the, the public to comment as well.
I, I, I have a couple of questions. So this whole model is figured on a three percent build rate, build-out rate, correct?
No, it, the, the model of local income taxes, it is built on a three percent growth in the local income taxes being received.
Yeah, go ahead and identify yourself for the record.
Corby Thompson with Crone and Associates. Um, so the, the way the model is organized or set up is three percent growth in the local income taxes received each year. The buildout is expected to happen over a span of ten years. Um, so when you kind of see those local income tax figures that you're seeing there, again, it's primarily to show that, um, your jail project isn't gonna be negatively impacted. Um, you know, the two hundred and thirty-seven percent debt service coverage really means you can pay that project two-point-three times over.
So, so let, let's say interest rates go crazy, this thing stalls out, and the, the, the homes aren't getting built. and the 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 homes aren't getting built as maybe originally planned. Does the lit revenue still grow? What drives, is is it actual residents that drive that lit revenue? People who reside there?
So, yeah, the lit revenue is just a collection on everybody's income that lives within the county. It's it's levied, obviously, by the county. So.
But it's not based on who lives there, it's based on basically a levy.
Local income taxes are a collection of of income tax. But it, the way it's allocated out to the various units is based upon the levy that's being levied by each of the the units within the county.
Which is why we showed three years, right, the initial three years, which to to you, to your your point, if it stalls out. So what we would, we we would expect is the levy of the town would not grow because there would not be growth in assessed value, there would not be growth in in development. And so you would really be looking at, let's say, let's say it hit three years and then it just completely stalled out. You'd be looking at that same.
Line across the.
For ten years, right, which is why we showed the first year projection. And again, you're you're always making projections, but the 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 levy would would, we would expect to be, you know, tied to the growth. And so if the growth doesn't occur, the the new town wouldn't take a a larger share of the lit, that share of lit won't grow. I think initially, we kind of just showed everybody the ten year projection build out, and they saw, and it it kind of jumped out as a big number. But it it doesn't capture the notion that necessarily that the the share of the new town's lit distribution is gonna be commensurate with the amount of lit that is being generated by the new town.
Keep going. I I have another question. So in in one of your illustrations, I I got too many papers here. You talk about the budget and that kind of thing, and you talk about a town board of three people. One, we don't know who those three people are now, because there's nothing, there's not, I don't think there's three people that that reside there yet. I know there's property owners, but and I know there's not been an election. How, I mean, for people to to start an MS four, for for, I guess, a part-time town board, is this not a huge task to take on for a three-member, part-time board with relatively not a ton of funding in the beginning? I mean, how how do they get over that hurdle? I mean, I know what Newburgh goes through and Chandler, and they got full staffs and stuff. And I don't, I don't think you had a town manager in there.
Yeah, eventually, there there is a town manager in the budget, but yeah, um, yeah, you kind of do have to build up to those expenses. And that's one of the reasons why in those first few years, you you actually need a tax rate above the eighty five cents. It's it's because there are some initial expenses that you that you need to pay for, as well as build an operating balance just for the town. Now, a- as far as being able to make that budget, I mean, there's towns across the, you know, the state that have, you know, smaller budgets, essentially what we're saying in year one, you know, and they and they make it work. You know, I can't remember exactly what the qualifications are for like MS four communities, but it's, but they won't be an MS four community.
That that's that that designation comes from IDIM. They're the ones that make that determination. So we we, I, and we've talked to the MS four, the IDIM MS four coordinator. I don't expect that's gonna happen anytime soon. But but yeah, no, I mean, there are certainly towns that around the state that operate on a smaller budget than even you're projecting in the first year and and have part-time council members. So to to me, that's not unusual, I would say. I don't, and 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 really, in the the DLGF as well, the the budget director for the DLGF, you know, it's kind of talking about how the the budget will be billed out and stuff. He made the point of, you know, you gotta start somewhere, like that's the, at a certain point, you just gotta kind of start. You gotta, you gotta go do it, and and you gotta allow this, the the town to be created, allow the people to be elected and and start implementing all of these things. And and the best we can do is project, you know, and that's why these guys did, I think, did a really good job of a a ten-year, like, didn't just look at what is a budget need to be in year, in year three, right, or in year one. And and they projected minimal budget and minimal costs initially. But also, as it grows, you know, at at ten years, assuming reasonable growth over the next ten years, what are the, what are the types of services that gonna gonna be needed, and what are those costs in order to do that? So.
To to Dan's point, if you don't mind, there I'm, there's going to be this funding gap period, right? That's kind of what you were maybe mentioning is, you know, the the effort, number one, the cost of setting everything up. And then what if there's gaps, right? If you to get it off the feet.
Who closes those gaps?
Yeah, that's this guy, right? We're, we are committed to this project, obviously. We're already spending a lot of money, okay? And everybody's all trying to figure out, how's he making money, okay? I'm spending money. It's it's in an effort for people who live there now, for fifty years from now, that we can set a good structure up, right, get the growth that we think we can get, I know we can get, if we have this type of a structure. It's much better than HOA. And and I mentioned it at the area plan meeting. We're not talking about a twenty acre farm field, right? We've we've done that, you know, we get that. We're not talking about a small vision. This is a big vision, and it requires big structure. And the municipal structure is the best thing for that. That's why it's there. That's why there's a process to do this, right? So when there's a gap to start it, right, we're going, as a developer, we want to see it succeed. So where there's gap, that's where we're gonna have to, you know, bridge that gap. We will probably be funding the attorney fees to get it going, set the ordinance up. Once the town's elected, to get a town manager, if we if we can afford it, right? And you're only gonna spend what you can afford. It's just like our household budgets, right? And but because we're the developer of the the town, we wanna see it succeed. So I'm not gonna say, well, good luck, town, right, start this thing and and see it fail. Obviously, I've got a vested interest in it. So we we gotta, we gotta bridge that, you know, where we can. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out. Do you guys have any other questions for us?
Sure. Does that answer your question? Guys, going back to the six services that you're required to provide, the town is providing the parks department out of the town budget, if it's approved, of course. So that's one. And then I think we've talked about this a little bit already. Some of those services are provided not necessarily by the town, but in the form of a contract for services that are already provided by others, and that meets the statutory statutory requirements, I assume.
Yeah, I'll let let me let Steve get to details, but basically, you know, the from from layman's terms, okay? We don't want to, the state, they don't want to see a setup in town, and we don't have this thought through, right? How are you doing these services, right? So it may not be necessarily you're self-performing all these things, but what's your idea on XYZ? So go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, and I'll I'll push back a little bit on the, understanding what the statute says. The statute doesn't say the municipality has to provide six of these services. It says a substantial majority of the property owners agree that they will be adequately provided. Right? And 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 a reason you know it's not, we have to provide six of these directly is schools, right? Well, the legislature wouldn't say a municipality has to provide schools, because you know a municipality can't provide schools, right? Health protection, municipalities don't provide health protection. That's at the county level, right? And that doesn't change. So the question is, have a substantial majority of the property owners agreed that at least six of these will be adequately provided? And the way we've satisfied that is by having a hundred percent of the property owners have have in their petition agreed. We, again, we made all this information available to them, outlined what the services were gonna be provided, gave copies of of the Cron report and fiscal plan. And they all signed on to agree that these services, as outlined in the fiscal plan, will be adequately provided.
Excuse me, how many property owners do you have out there right now?
I'd have to go, that's a good question.
Property owners is probably.
Thirty five, I think, thirty five petitions.
Yeah, it's more than that, I think, Steve.
How many properties are there gonna be?
We, well, for for, we're anticipating four hundred developed units, so four hundred lots, right?
You don't have a substantial majority of future owners out there that have agreed to this right now.
Well, that property certainly is owned, right? It's it's owned by somebody, right?
Oakland Holdings?
That's me, right? So I I agree, you know, but there's the everybody else who's there, and and by by say that tongue in cheek, because it's it's only, we we had the chance to say, hey, let's make sure we can fund everything. Let's grab other people, right? There's, there's pretty big fish around that area, and let's try to fund it. I was not gonna go there. It's only what we owned and what we were developing at the time, right? And what we can plan to grow, right? So it's just that area. Nobody is, if you're not buying in to the whole overall goal, and it was on the deed, you know, and further consent. So everybody's buying in, and we we anticipate, if we're able to to do this town, do this municipality situation, it can continue to develop in this manner, right? If not, and that's another point to think about, if not, is it gonna change? Yeah, it probably will. It's gonna change in some manner, you know? So tho- those will develop as, that's part of the growth thing, right? That's going to that that growth. Residents right now, I I, there's a couple folks who might be in the audience that are residents now, are gonna be. I'd say we're gonna have maybe eight resident, or six to eight residents potentially by the end of the year, depending on people's personal, you know, plans.
Let me, let me drill down, back up a little bit there on the on the property owner's consent. You have the deed and additional consent, which we've got copies here in the petition. What was that process?
Well, when someone wanted to purchase a lot, we, before we sold any lots out there, that's why I said this been working on for a while, we had a consent on the deed. It said, hey, if you wanna buy a lot, you need to be aware of this. And it went through our process for of our Realtor team, and it it was probably presented, hey, this may never happen, you never know. But we're we're really thinking about this, you know, so you're.
That's what we've got in the petition, that.
No, no, you've got the consent. The deeds are, they're literally on people's deeds.
We've got two layers of that.
Correct, yeah. So that was before they bought. Then after they bought.
Then we went and got the consent from them as well, yeah.
Before, in really, I would say in the in the last quarter of last year is when we went to all of the property owners. Existing property owners at the time, and those are all attached.
So let me ask this, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So if if you said you had six to eight residents by year end, will those three town board members be elected out of those people who 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 are, I mean, what if, hey, I know what it is to get people to run for offices. We got a lot of people, we got slated into offices. What if you don't have that?
So we can, we can make it work with two. We can, we could run the town with two council members. We can, by statute, we could have two that are the council, and when, and then without a clerk treasurer, you can have one of them act as the clerk treasurer for the town as well.
One of those two?
One of those two people can as well, and then there's.
So what if you have a split vote?
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't pass.
Are you, are you the king?
They would have to be residents, everybody that's on the town council, clerk treasurer, obviously, would have to be residents. And ultimately, they would, they would run the town, but you can operate a town with two council members. And then if the population grows out, or develops in the following year, they can fill that vacancy. The town council actually would be able to fill that.
Till now, where they don't have to wait till the next election.
Yeah, yeah. And and the the town also could contract with another municipality with the to have their, the other, another municipality's clerk treasurer help fill some of the clerk treasurer responsibilities. There's a, there's a process to do that in the statute as well.
Yeah, not not in any particular order. Do you guys already have a marketing plan put together?
A marketing plan?
To bring people to Victoria Woods?
No, we do not. I mean, it's, this is not, you, you don't wanna sell something that you don't, right, you don't have. And so what we've done is we've put everything on our website and and identified everything of this process here, because that's where we are, you know? So I don't wanna market something that's not there yet.
I understand. I I was gonna have, the reason I'm asking a question is, you know, we might like to see that if you do have it developed.
Sure.
But I understand you wouldn't put the cart before the horse.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob, do you have any questions? Some notes here. Dan, do you have any other questions? While Dan is thinking, is, are there any audience members here to speak for or against this? Mr. Overton, you've signed in? Mr. Overton, do you live in or outside of the proposed town?
What's that?
Do you live in or outside?
I'm outside. I'm at one eighty-five Dusty Road.
Thank you.
So I'm coming from the perspective of my experience of being on the council. And Brad Overton, sorry, but my biggest concern is the impact that this town would have on the lit and the PSL, PSL IT income and the impact that that could have on the local, the other municipalities and towns that are already in place. And the impact that that could have on their funding. I mean, you're looking at roughly two and a half to two point three percent for each one of those items. And I know currently, there's a lot of struggles for those different municipalities to meet, make ends meet with fire, all kinds of different safety things. I mean, you all are familiar with those as well as I am. But I just wanted to bring that up as a member of the council and just kind of speak to the financial concerns, because I've always been, tried to be as frugal with the county's money as possible. And those are just some of my concerns and the impact that that may have on that. So I just wanted to voice those and put those out there for you and just kind of make that be known.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Overton. I would, I would ask that, I think they would address some of that. I would ask that you get, get in contact with Cronin, I'm sorry, Cronin Associates. Let's get those questions answered, check the box. Anyone else here to speak for or against? Sir?
Jim Morley, Jr. I can't speak to the taxes part of it, and I know that for sure. I will tell you that, to be honest with you, I think it's a great idea. I stand in support of it. You all know that I would do the engineering work on it, but I like the idea of bringing something new to War County, something I think will drive growth in that area. I think people will be excited about living in the town of Victoria Woods, and it'll drive growth in that area on a piece of ground that sat vacant for a long time. And so I stand in support of it. The tax part, I can't speak to, but I do like the idea.
Let me ask you a question. I do consider you a subject matter expert. Councilman Overton just just said he's concerned about the impact of taking tax money away from the county. However, the developer has stated that just bringing those people here will will offset that. What's your opinion? Put you on the spot.
You should know I don't do my own checkbooks, so when it comes to finances, maybe we should get my wife in here. But I'll say this much, the developer, one of the things I gotta love about Jordan is he dreams big, and he doesn't go halfway on something. And I love a big dream. I love getting outside the box and coming up with a way to drive growth in that area. That project has, as you all know, it has unique terrain, which is cool from the way, if you all have been out there, it looks pretty cool, but it also brings with it its own set of challenges. And Oakland Holdings has taken that on and taken a piece of ground that, if you remember right, rewind five years ago, you know, somebody tried doing that, and you know, and they wanted millions of dollars from the government.
Two million from the state.
They were striking deals with everybody, you know, and Oakland Holdings has came in, to the best of my knowledge, has pretty much done it on their own nickel. And I think something like this will help drive development in that area, not only on their property. I think it will drive development in the greater area around there. I think it will bring people to War County from other counties, because just to be honest with you, there's nothing else in southwest Indiana like the ring of Victoria, the town of Victoria Woods. And so I think it would be good for the area's growth, and I think it would be good for the subdivision itself.
Thank you.
Jim, can I, can I ask you a question? So one of the questions that has been brought to my attention, well, what what will create another developer of, you know, here are just, you know, five hundred acres of farm ground, and, you know, we're gonna build a, we're gonna. And, you know, we're going to build a, we're going to build a, you know, four, 500 homes in there. Now we want to become our own town. Do you think, I mean, ultimately it comes to our, go through all the channels that Jordan has spent. And I know Jordan has spent a couple nickels on this, you know, and then some. But do you feel in your mind, because you are a subject matter expert in this, will that, will that set a precedent? Will that start something going that we're just going to have all these little bitty towns form or?
I think the majority of the projects that we see come into War County, well, a couple of things. Typically, they aren't this big. Typically, they come in in 20 or 40 acre chunks. And typically, they are more standardized subdivisions, you know? They're, they're 60 foot lots, 70 foot lots, 50, I mean, 100, I mean, they're pretty kind of cookie cutter, if you will. And I don't, I don't see the majority of developers with the, with the gumption to take on the idea of creating a town.
The upfront costs would add substantial amounts to, to a lot.
I, I don't think I have any other customers that'll be here next month looking to start up a town.
Thank you.
And so I, so I.
I haven't slept for two days. I don't know if it's because of this or, or what.
I, I, so, so I don't think that, I don't think you're, you're opening the floodgates to every subdivision wanting to be a town. I think to me, uh, this is a little bit of a, more of a unique situation because of the size of the property, because of, um, where it's at and because of the terrain that it's being built out of, uh, and trying to create a sense of place. And I think that they're trying to create that sense of place. They've done some things like if you go out there, you know, they've got the, the covered bridges you come in. And I mean, they're trying to create a sense of place, a sense of destination. And I think this is part of that process. There aren't any other subdivisions that we've been involved with in War County that really have that desire to create a sense of place. Uh, Lakewood Crossing would maybe be the next closest, but Lakewood Crossing is really just a great big subdivision, you know? But they're not trying to create their own sense of place. And I think that's what they're trying to do here with the, with the, with a town. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sherry?
Sherry Severs, Boomville City Council, District One. Uh, as council member for the city of Boomville, we did vote unanimously for this project. We will, as you all know, be providing the water. As a Boomville Now member, I feel like, um, I don't think there's going to be a nicer subdivision in southern Indiana, period, the end. Um, and I think for Boomville, because I am all about Boomville, I think that this will bring so much to our community. I, I timed it. I drove it the other day. It's exactly four minutes from there to Boomville. And what I think that'll do for our community is bring people to buy groceries from our local businesses, to shop on our square. I think it's a huge impact for Boomville. Gets us closer to being what I would say we all work for is a destination. But the Eigner family gives this community so much, and they work so hard. When Jordan Eigner goes on vacation, he asks his kids one question. Every time they go somewhere, he says, I want you to give me a list. All my kids have to give me a list of something they saw on vacation that Boomville doesn't have. And that man works toward those goals. He is about War County. His family's about War County. They have invested so much in our community and they've worked hard for it. When I was working at Toyota, third shift at night, when I would be coming home at 3:30 in the morning, Jerry Eigner was pulling out, going to work. And I, I really doubt that he got home before nine o'clock that night. And they're investing, and they're not even living there. And they're investing so much capital for something that I, I honestly, um, I believe will work if nothing else, just on, on Jordan's drive. Because I, I don't think unsuccessful is really in their vocabulary. And I do have one question, and I think it's a Baker Tilly question for Steve, maybe? I don't know. Uh, but for fire services out there. Now, is that something that Boomville provides since you are getting lit? Or is that, I would just like to know how that works?
Would continue to be a part of the fire territory, just as it is now. The fire rate would get captured into the fire territory.
Okay.
As well. So it would, it would, for all practical purposes, not change the fire service.
Okay.
In the way that it's provided.
Okay. And that's all I have to say, just my two cents.
Sherry, I just want to disagree with one statement you made that you are not just all about Boomville. You do a lot for this county, and thank you. You, your heart's in the right place.
That's because I work for three great commissioners too. Thank you.
Did we pay her for that?
I did.
I did, I did just want, I think that, uh, for Sherry, the, um, the comment about the fire territory, I did talk to Stephen Byers early on, and I believe if we were wanting to have our own fire station, that's when money would come away from him. And I said, hey, that's not something we're wanting to do right now. Um, so we, we just remain in the same jurisdiction. Steve, is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
No changes, basically.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Um, so I, I didn't see anybody else coming up, but certainly if anybody else wants to or whatever. And I, I appreciate your time. I know we're going way over. Um, but I do, I, it's important to me. You know, Brad made comment about the taxes, and I get that. I mean, the, the effort we've made, certainly with Baker Tilly, you know, they've kind of substantiated a lot of things. I think they've addressed a lot of those concerns, okay? But, you know, that, that's, there's never a for sure thing, right, in life, okay? And so I think I kind of pulled this down to, if I could pull myself out of being in this. And you kind of think of a tale of two projects, a two, a two opportunities here. You know, as a county, we, we want developers coming in. We want businesses. We want growth, right? And so when we have large businesses come in, we actually seek them out. Our economic development director, Steve Rowley, does an amazing job with that. And we're starting to fill up the industrial park, okay? But we still want them to come in. So rhetorical question, do we offer them tax incentives? Yeah, we do. Those, those amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? We offer them, I'm just going to leave it at this, very good land incentives, right? You have to, to get them. They're looking at St. Louis, Indianapolis, everywhere else, right? And we, and we do all that. So basically, county is giving away revenue, okay? In hopes of someone brings a, a business here. It's a cost taken away from the county in hopes that they what?
Generate more revenue. I mean, bring, bring more people.
Bring more people, right? So we're going to give them everything, and, and I'm for it. I'm 100% for it, but I'm just relating this. We give them everything we can to get them, just to put their business here, 10-year tax phase in, okay? And we have zero guarantee that anybody will ever, because we're, you know, we're right next to Vandenberg County, other great places, zero guarantee that they're going to come here, right? And, or people are going to live here, right? Their houses, rooftops, okay? So there's one proposition that we exist for, we push for, we pay a developer, economic development director for, and he does great at it. And we want more of that. Over here, we've got a developer that's coming in here and saying, I've got a project for you guys. I'm going to take some of the most challenging property you have and the lowest tax base property you have right now. And it's got, you know, concerns about it. The reason, there's reason it hasn't been developed, but I'm ready to take it on. And I'm going to increase your assessed value to $200 million over maybe 10 years, okay? And you're going to have miles and miles of streets that you don't have to take care of, okay? Not at all. And I'm going to bring people who are coming from out of county, out of state, okay? Executives that live here, and they're coming, okay? And really, I don't need any money from you. That's the two, that's what we got, you know? And so to me, I know there's risk reward here, right? And we, we, we all know what it is. We're looking at the lit, and yes, there's a concern there. Brad's right. There is a concern. But the risk reward for those two scenarios, what I just laid out, to me, it's a no brainer. Obviously, I'm a proponent for it, right? This is my project for it. But to me, it's very clear. It's very clear. I know you're, you're in a difficult seat. You have to work with a lot of different people, and you got the whole county to worry about, you know? I think the biggest thing here is opportunity for growth, something new, and we can show the rest of the state, it's a great place to develop, you know? And we want more projects like this, and we can think out of the box. So, sorry for a sales pitch, but that's.
No, I, I, I think that's, that's, that's good to hear. Jordan would, I don't know how to ask this question. So Greenlife, maybe a lot of people is not familiar with the Greenlife. It was an out of town, uh, corporation, development corporation that came into our community, and they wanted to develop, as Jordan said, this, this, this ground. And they were, they got a $2 million grant from the state that had to be used by a certain amount of time that never, they, they couldn't meet the timeline to utilize that. And like Jordan said, they just wanted to get their buckets filled up with money. They were from Florida. They're used to having tourism dollars, just pour, pour, pour in. We're, we're not that, we're not at that place. Um, if the county, if, 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 if the county upfront, uh, how, the economic development team, our economic development team, which I think is fabulous.
I agree.
You, you serve on that board, along with, with many other smart, smart business people in this community. If, if they were to offer, I'm going to say a guy like you, you know, incentives to build out some of those amenities that maybe, that will create a sense of place, would that made a difference to your thought process on whether you would want to become a town or not?
Good question. I'd love for you to kick in some money, right? I'll take it.
Can't have both.
Right. Um, I, so if it was just for that.
This is Dan Saylor just asking him. I'm not.
Honestly, Dan, and, and a lot of people will say, and I try to get it down to, even before today, I was trying to think, if somebody says, what are you doing this for? I was trying to get down to one thing. It's not. And, and if you were at the area plan meeting, and I'm trying to be brief again, but there was, there's so many things. There's numerous things about that, just that area, that property and that project, that when you look at them singularly, it's like, ah, no big deal. But when you add them all up, right? Th- this is the, the best way to go. So if you were just, if you said, hey, how about we give, give you a couple, you know, $100,000, $200,000 for the amenity, okay? And we're going to work that into a plan. Anybody moving forward who has a big plan with some kind of back, clawback, I still would ask you, I would still be here because of the other reasons, okay? You know, there's, I, I, if you remember, there was, uh, I've got a land trust that I didn't put there. I had to deal with the land trust. I had to do.
Is that the land to the north? Is that what?
Yes. And what we're wanting to do is incorporate that as part of a connection from the south, from Freeman Park, and have a path all the way through there and get up through to the Boomville Trail as well. And work with the city of Boomville, and we're talking to them right now. I can't do that. I, as a municipality has to have the ability, has to have the ability for eminent domain to take that. I can't do it.
And you can't do it as a, as a developer.
Yeah. I was very lucky. I found a, a, I'm not going to call it a legal loophole, but it was there. We just, I turned the paper upside down one day and figured it out, just to get sewer through there. I almost didn't have a project because on property I owned, I couldn't get a sewer easement from the, from the land trust. So that's just one, we're talking about just one thing, right? Then there's the topography and our ordinance and trying to keep it beautiful and trails and the commitment to trails. It just, you know, it all adds up. So I would love that. I think you probably, for other developers, I won't get it. You wait, wait, you know, I'm too early. That's a great idea, you know? Maybe it's 25 grand for a big idea, whatever, you know? But I would still be here.
Again, this is not, to, to reiterate, this is not the 40 acre, you know, cookie cutter.
Right.
70, 80 foot, you know.
Right.
You know, and so, but I just, I just, I, I, I'd never ask you that question. I thought, well.
Well, and here's the thing to think about, okay? We, we, we would love War County, we would love to see these big ideas out of town. This happens everywhere else, right? These are master plan communities, okay? People just don't come here, right? If we don't develop from within, I mean, it just doesn't happen, you know, not like that. So.
We had somebody from Florida trying to do that.
Right. And they had money, you know? To date, we put $10 million in this project. And there's, I, I think there's, I'm not joking. We, we have. So that's why they didn't cut, it was, it was in the middle of nowhere from utilities and access standpoint, just to get there, you know? So.
Yeah, and I know one of their challenges was dealing with it at Time Vector and with, yeah, just simple, uh, we wanted to get utilities, you know, in a certain place versus in the standard, you know, down behind your house or in front. I, I remember that.
Right, right. And they just would, they just couldn't clear those hurdles where we were willing to take the risk, you know?
I, I guess I'm just surprised that they didn't try to do what you're doing. Is, is maybe, is it just too much upfront money?
Is it? I mean, it's, well, look what we're talking about. Look at, look what a kind of big hubbub this is, right? How many people want to go through this, you know?
Not me.
Right. Sorry, you're in it. But I mean, you know, it, it's a big process. I, bigger than I expected from the beginning. Yeah, this is, it's grown. You know, I was, I was ignorant and uneducated myself on how long, not big a deal this was, but hey, this is a long deal, you know? And that's why you, that you asked a question, well, there must be something wrong with this, why it's never done. That's not the case. It's just, you gotta, you gotta want to, you want to grind at it. You, you know, you want to see it succeed, you know?
Well, maybe you have to be from War County to invest, want to invest so much in the light county as you have.
Well, and that, and that's one thing about Jordan, you know, he, they're a family that's here. They live here. They shop here. They, you know, and they're, they're part of the community. And, and I was always leery of, of, of green life because, you know, uh, you know, one, like one person moved into a house in War County, and now they're, you know, now they're in War County, whether or not.
Yeah.
But, yeah. And so that, that's one thing I, I appreciate.
Yeah, and you were right about them. You, it, you know, as much as I wanted to see that happen.
I did too.
It, it didn't.
It didn't.
You know, so.
And here we are.
And here we are.
Here we are. Yeah. So hopefully, you know, um, you guys see our vision, right? And, uh, I mean, and I, I've said this before, and I don't, I don't want to step on anybody's toes. But to me, the, the, there's a reason the state put this decision to this board. Because the, the county commissioners, you're the executive branch of our, of our area, right? Uh, and so policy, vision, big things, right? Now, the council's got to do their job and checks and balances. And hey, don't get out in front of your skis. And I mean, it was well worth it to do what we did with the Baker Tilly thing. That's part of what we were doing, right? Um, but this decision, and again, I don't mean it bad. I've, I've contacted all the county councilmen just to see if they needed information. They were very good to answer my call. And we, you know, not that necessarily they agreed or disagreed, but they answered the call and we had a conversation. But to me, these decisions rely here because you've got to be able to take that risk reward, you know? Whoever holds the checkbook is probably not going to want to do a lot of crazy silly stuff like this, right? You got to be able to look past that and balance that risk reward, you know? Not that they can't, but, you know, that, that money is just, that's just the money thing. But there's much more than just what we could maybe lose in lit, right? So I don't diminish, I don't diminish that, but I think it's a, let's look at the overall project. You know, do you have another project right now that is, that's saying, hey, I, I'm, I'm ready to develop? And I'm going to increase your assessed value by 200 million. Do you have another one?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
You and your wife good with this decision?
No, my, right now, this is dedication. My family is in Washington DC, and I'm missing four days of my vacation because of this silly meeting, so. But that's what I, you know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, counsel. Do you have any comments?
Uh, no, you'd need to recess the public hearing and then get back into your regular.
Thank you.
Make a motion to recess the public hearing. Second?
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Motion reconvene.
So, uh, you're already back in session. So, uh, in terms of your next agenda item, action on the public hearing, this was laid out briefly in the packet that was provided, but, uh, the commissioners' options for action on the public hearing are laid out in the statute in the, in section eight of that, of that chapter. You have, uh, four options, uh, one of them being take no action today and, uh, table it. Uh, and there was a timeline that was referred to that if, if by June 1st, and that, uh, some sort of. And there was a timeline that was referred to that if, if by June 1st, and that, uh, some sort of, uh, action can be taken, was their request. But if you wish to take action today, then the three options are to either approve the petition for incorporation and adopt the proposed ordinance, to deny that petition, uh, or to place the question of incorporation as a public question on the next election, which the petition states, request that not be a special election, so that would be held at the next general election in November. And the, 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 those who have property within the incorporated, proposed incorporated area will then vote to determine whether or not they wish to incorporate.
So, so let me stop you there, so that's residents or property owners?
That would be property owners, anybody who owns property within the proposed incorporated territory would vote on that issue, that public question.
It would be residents, and in a, in a, it would be residents on that.
On, on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
If it went to, if you guys were to place it on the ballot, the voters, it would be voters, eligible voters.
So, so if you don't have a home structure on there, you're not.
You don't reside there.
You don't reside, okay.
And, and that was why our request was to not do that, because also we feel like we had 100, 100% of the people have already agreed to it. Or the residents, here to us, so.
That's what I was going to say.
If, if the commissioners wish to, uh, statute lays out, as mentioned, if you, uh, in order to approve the petition, you have to find that all of those requirements have been met. It doesn't say that you must approve the petition if the requirements are met, but in order to approve it, you do have to find that those requirements have been met. There is, uh, no guidance in terms of if you want to deny the petition, uh, you have to make any certain findings. But, uh, those are your options under the statute for, uh, taking action on the public hearing, if you wish to take action at all today.
In my opinion, send it to a referendum, doesn't make any sense. Any likely residents there have already expressed their approval, so what, what's the point?
I agree.
I agree.
I feel like there are a couple of unanswered questions, not from your team, but from internal that need to be addressed. Also, any, any big action that we've taken as a board, I think we've, we've always kind of slept on it, so to speak. Just, just to ponder a little bit longer, so.
I think there might be some questions from the council, but I'd like to sit down and maybe hash through some of those and maybe Jordan's team, or Jordan can help entertain that.
Okay. Thoughts?
I, I, I agree, I, I, I think they addressed some of it. I, I, I hope maybe some of the discussion here, you know, I, this is real important. This has not been done in many, 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 many years, it's not done every day, so. Well, I like to, you know, check off the boxes and keep things moving. I think this is real, is really important decision, I just, I, I want to, you know, I'd like to make sure, you know, our team, our internal team, you know, which is three councilman, or three commissioners and seven, uh, council members that, you know, we're all thinking the same way. Not that we always do, but you know, I, uh, I, I appreciate their input, you know, and I've gotten some from them. They, they have, the ones I've talked to said, you, you guys have reached out to them. But I think there's still, you know, a, a few internal questions, you know, that we have and, and, um, you know, and I, I don't know if, if, if we could sit and meet with Jordan's team again, uh, would that have to be, can that be in the, I mean, what, I don't know what that would look like, but.
We could talk about that. We could always do another public meeting, hold a special meeting, uh, but we, we could talk about, there's an avenue to talk with Jordan.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, I obviously 100% recognize it's a big decision. So while I would love to, you know, push you for a vote, right? Well, I want to make sure you have time and you've heard, we've had the public hearing. But you, if you want to talk to the councilman, if you, if you want to have myself or their meeting, whatever, I guess the only thing I have a request, if you entertain potentially tabling tonight, that's fine with me and I, that's probably very wise of you. Maybe if you wouldn't care just to see how, just how soon we could do it right after that, because, you know, it's, it's a yeoman's work here trying to, we're hanging on, we don't, we don't know if we're going, we're not, you know?
I think we let Jordan go on his vacation first.
Yeah, or we might need police protection.
So I'm, so I'm fine with that, and you just consider, you know, kind of something prompt. I don't know when your next meeting is, if we can consider, you know, an effort maybe to try to go to that next meeting.
So next meeting would be, uh, April 10th, right Heather?
Correct.
10th and 24th would be the next two opportunities. And what was that, you need, you need, you need action by June 1st, right?
And this may preferably, you said.
Go in the, in the May, wait, I got by June 1st.
Well, I'm, that's, I'm just going to tell you. I, I mean, if we could do April 10th, that'd be great. If we have to go and, you know, just, you know, and I guess to, to a certain extent, if, I get, you have, have to have internal conversations and review some of the information we've had. If there's something else you need, let me know, but if we get to a point where, you know, we don't really know what else we need, I mean, let's, let's bring this baby to vote, you know, so.
I've, I've got several notes written down here, which were not questions, but there's a couple, a couple pieces of information that I feel like we need internally for sure.
That's fine, yeah.
You know, and, and, and part of that, Jordan, is, 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 you know, what we're, you know, we're facing, you know, a potential, you know, uh, to renew a bond that's going to drop off by the end of the year. We're potentially looking at a new jail, the, the timing as far as us and our ducks in a row, or, you know, that's what we've really got to make sure that, you know, and that's why the council's very important, you know?
I agree.
You know, it's, it's not three people that run this county, it's.
Yeah.
I've always said that, and so, um, we got a great relationship with the council. Unfortunately, due to state statutes and laws, we all can't sit in a room and meet together.
I know very well.
And have a conversation, which is, you, they want us to run a government, but we can't sit here and have conversations to work out, you know, hash out things. And some things are not, you know, sometimes I use the language, my last name's Saylor and I use language as a sailor. Sometimes you can't use that in a public meeting, but that's where I get my point across.
He certainly did today.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. But, uh, it, it just, it, it, I would feel better if we just, even, even a couple, you know, a couple weeks would, would help.
Jordan, when are you back from vacation?
I don't know, my wife runs that schedule. I think I've just got four days left of it, so I'm back in town, I'll be in town in 10th, obviously, so, you know? Maybe we could hold a spot there and then you guys could let me know. I mean, our normal form of communication is if we want something on the agenda, we get with Heather. Likewise, if it, you know, we can follow that normal form of communication.
I think two, two weeks.
10th would be fine.
10th would be.
10th is fine, okay. And if it's not.
Does that work?
That, that's fine, if it's not, then Heather can email me and say, hey, you know, we're moving you off the agenda to the next meeting, whatever. So.
So, so I, I want to say something to the people who have taken the time out to come to this meeting, one, we appreciate it. Because this is a huge decision, guys, I mean, I, you know, I, when, when Jordan first, I can remember the first time he mentioned it to us, it was that sitting at the table yesterday, and I thought, wow, what a great vision. I'm on economic development, I love Jordan's thinking, um, I, I love the big vision. But then you start learning more and more things about it, and I'm not saying bad things, but things that you got to make sure, you know, that you're not, you're not making the, the wrong decision, you know, for what's best for Warwick County as a whole, you know? And, and that's what, I was elected, you know, by Warwick County residents, and I, I know we got a, it's based on what's best for this community, but, you know, my community is Warwick County, so, but, uh, so I, I appreciate your input. So my point was, I'm going to make, you know, people out in the audience, you know, if you have input that you're, you know, not wanting to sit here and, you know, maybe speak at, you know, call into Heather and, 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 you know, if you want us, one of us to call you back, you know, we would, we would love to hear from, you know, we think it's that important, so we appreciate you all coming. Sorry, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jordan, for you and your team to show up and take your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So you alluded to it a little bit, this is not just a decision about the town of Victoria Woods, it's a decision about how it fits into the big puzzle of Warwick County as a whole. And there's a lot going on right now, and that's some of the stuff that we need to get figured out. So, just, just to emphasize that. I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, table this issue, Victoria Woods, um, until the next meeting of April 10th.
Yep, I'll second that.
I'll motion to table, and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. See, see you on April 10th. Next order of business. Next order of business is the approval of minutes from our March 13th, 2023 regular session.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries. Next order of business is our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have tonight for you the consent agenda, and on that consent agenda is the county auditor claims voucher, report date 3/29/2023, payroll dates of Friday, February, Friday, sorry, Friday, March 24th and Wednesday, March 29th, 2023. The Keller Schrader SMS agreement, purchase order for the Warwick EMS radios, Castle High School commencement road closure request, youth care services agreement, telephone road parcel 49 administrative settlement, clerk's monthly report dated February 2023, weights and majors report 21623 through 31523, fixed asset notification for the 2023 Polaris Ranger for the EMA department, the public defender's office lawn contract, telephone road project parcel 15 administrative settlement, Keller Schrader Nutanix renewal, and the Dossip consulting agreement for the auditor's office.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
That's all, thank you, Mr. President.
Excuse me. Thank you. Next order of business is our county attorney.
Uh, nothing on the agenda for today, uh, Mr. President. Just, uh, do want to remind the council, I did, uh, send an email of the proposed contract with our QAW for your review, and we can put that on the agenda when you're ready to discuss.
Thank you. Next order of business is our county highway and, or highway superintendent and engineer standing in, we have Mr. Sherwood.
Steve Sherwood, assistant engineer, standing in for Bobby Howard, county engineer. First item he has listed on the, is the NOVA solution software proposal. I believe, uh, Mr. President, you're familiar with this. I was asked to present it tonight for approval. I believe the, uh, amount requested on, uh, first year was a total of $15,000.065, $15,065.0 cents. And if, if you would just, for the record, explain the types of, uh, software. Programs that this will involve the use of it.
So it is a, uh, a work order and asset management software, uh, primarily for the highway department. However, it is an unlimited license, so, uh, we may choose to, uh, involve, for example, the facilities and we could, at the end of the day, let other departments use it.
So what's this for?
Work order of management asset management.
Okay, so we can use it for like Jeff.
Yep.
Other areas.
Uh, I see, yeah, the highway.
Okay.
And I believe Terry and Bobby have looked at various other softwares and this was the clear choice.
Correct, correct.
Yes, we're going, I make a motion to approve the, uh, the NOVA soft, solution software proposal as long as it meets all the criteria from legal counsel.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
I'll have that, uh, document for your signature after the conclusion of the meeting. The only other item I wanted to introduce on the record.
There is one provision that, uh, we pointed out, that, uh, the contract requires the county to pay any applicable taxes that may apply, which, uh, shouldn't be any, but just out of safety concern, county is not in the habit of paying taxes. So we would just, uh, uh, ask NOVA to strike that, strike that line.
And the last issue I have, not on the agenda, is just to update you on what occurred this weekend. We got notice that, uh, Liberty Mining has affected the travelway of New Harmony Road in between, uh, Escu and Wirebacher. I met with mine officials this morning to go over. We currently have the roadway closed as of Sunday night. The mining is getting, uh, the mining company is getting to evaluate what's causing the cracking next to the high wall and trying to determine the severity of it. They're hoping to have, uh, a complete study yet, in the next day or two, and have the roadway reopen as soon as possible. In the abundance of safety, we have closed the road until we get to the bottom of what's causing the cracking and the settlement and, uh, hope to have some information for the commissioners yet in the next few days.
Did miss a call from the plant manager at 4:05 during this meeting, just so you know.
They said they would try to get hold of you as president to update you on what they found. That's all that I have for Bobby's business this evening.
Thank you. Next item of business is items for discussion, uh, Stephen Byers, Boonville Fire Chief.
Um, Stephen Byers, Boonville Fire Chief. Uh, I'd reached out to Terry after March 3rd, we'd had some issues, uh, with CO2 buildup in homes, which is lowering the oxygen levels. So lots happened since then, we've learned a lot about it. I was talking to Dennis, he's actually working on getting the information together for an ordinance. Uh, it's got a lot of, a lot of great things in it that I feel will probably fix the issue on new construction homes. And then Sherry just shared some information with me, so I'll, I'll be getting with her about, uh, possibly something we can do in the future for existing homes. There may be an avenue there as well. But, uh, on behalf of the fire departments in the county, I'd just like to ask, once Dennis gets this ordinance taken care of, I'd like to ask the commissioners to, uh, consider that for approval. We've, we've seen it on older homes that have been 20 years old, and a lot of the homes we've seen recently are brand new construction. So, uh, I think moving forward, if we have something in place for the new construction, it'll take care of a lot of those issues. And then we've just got to try to figure out how to get the message out to everyone about the existing homes and how that can be fixed. Because the good thing, it can be fixed, uh, it can be resolved to keep the levels at a safe level. Not saying it'll 100%, you know, keep CO2 out of their homes, but it will keep it at a safe level. So, I would just ask that, like I said, once Dennis gets that done, has all the information, uh, ask that you support that and, and get it put in place.
Stephen, I know this has been a little bit on social media, but can you comment a little bit on what's causing this?
Yeah, so we found out that, uh, with the CO2, as it rains or we have a low pressure system come in, it starts pushing the gases up out of the ground on the previously, uh, strip mined ground. Uh, all the homes we've dealt with have been on strip mined ground. So it starts pushing the gases up out of the ground to lower pressures, which in the homes, uh, it's coming up around sump pumps and basements, cracks in the concrete, anywhere there's an opening in the concrete. So it can be fixed with, with the soil depressurization system. So basically, it's a pipe that goes below the concrete floor in the basement. It's got a fan on it and it keeps the soil at a lower pressure than what it is in the home to keep the gases from expanding. So, um, basically, a lot like how radon gets, gets into the homes, uh, comes up through the soil. There's three or four different things that cause the CO2 in the ground. It's, you know, it's naturally occurring from decaying materials, uh, limestone that's in the ground that they've put into, uh, acidic soil to kind of neutralize it, and then natural limestone. So, uh, there's a couple different ways that, that it's caused, but, you know, same thing with, with the pressure and the rain, it's forcing the gases up out of the ground.
So I was gonna ask Dennis, our building commissioners in the back there.
Yes.
Uh, if he supported this, obviously he's working.
Yeah, he's working on it. He's on top of it.
I'm gonna assume he, he supports it.
Yeah, he, he's been, uh, talking to some of the environmental professionals that, that deal with this stuff. Um, some of the homeowners out there that had a lot of good information that had the issue. Um, so yeah, he's got a lot of great information in this, so. I think he'll probably be bringing it to you guys pretty soon for consideration.
You know, I don't, I went to the meeting that they have, uh, uh, out there and, and learned that, uh, there was a, a device that measures this and, and they're at that meeting and I, I purchased one of mine and it's, it's amazing. My wife, we have a fireplace and, uh, it's amazing though, the notices that we get. It does CO2, it does radon.
Yeah.
Or we've not even put it downstairs yet. We just put it in the living area. And, uh, you know, and, you know, I guess when I'm in there, I guess I don't care. It says, it says high CO2 causes low productivity in the office or home. Now I figured out why I don't want to do anything when I go home. Uh, but, but I, I, I tell you, I have my grandbabies there that, that, you know, I think I'll breathe some dirty air, but when they're there, it's different. So it, it's made me really realize, hey, we gotta shut that fireplace off and, you know, let some fresh air in here and that kind of thing. So.
It's something we don't really think about, you know?
But they're, I, I'm, I'm, I'm buying one for all my kids to put in their homes. So anyway, I, I think I learned a lot at that meeting. It was a great meeting.
And, and we've probably had, I bet you we've probably had over a hundred phone calls, emails where people, you know, have asked for information, what do we need to do, you know, everybody? And, and that's the big thing we've told everyone is there's no need to freak out about it. It can be fixed, you know, because a lot of these homes are bigger homes with basements. It can be fixed.
But if you don't know, you can't fix it.
Right. So, so we've recommended they put the ventilation system in. We recommended they put meters in to monitor it. And, and like I said, I've heard feedback, uh, back from some of those people who said that, hey, our levels climbed with this past rain event this weekend, but they stayed at a safe level where before they were, were exceeding that safe level.
And if you feel a little funny and you're in your basement, go outside and get some.
Go outside, get some fresh air. If you feel better, it's probably CO2.
The other indicator too, Stephen, is if they have a water heater, uh, standing pilot light, a gas thing, if that's having trouble staying lit.
Yep.
That's usually an indicator they got some issues going on.
Yeah, can't, can't support combustion. Um, we even had one, the, in the attached garage, neither one of the vehicles would start. And as soon as we opened the garage door and they got fresh air in there, uh, aired out a little bit, both vehicles started. So we, we were seeing some oxygen levels in basements down to 3%, as low as 3%. So, you know, anything under 19 and a half is dangerous. So, um, so yeah, it is definitely something that, that now we're learning more about it. We know it's here. We know it can be fixed. So it's just going to be trying to get that message out and then hopefully catch it on the new construction and, and prevent those folks from having issues.
Happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Thanks for all you do.
Any other items for discussion? Anyone?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.